Is he protesting?
Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting in the Lunenburg Select Board. Today is Tuesday, November the 28th, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Access, over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube Channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions, though not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. I'd like to acknowledge this evening that we have Mr. Alonso and Mr. Nuzzolo joining us via Zoom, and so all votes tonight will be taken via roll call. We're to start tonight with public comments from the public. Do we have any public comments from the public this evening?
Good evening, Anna Lockwood, 91 Main Street. So I went to town meeting, and I was there until the end. And I'm going to make a comment related to town meetings, so thank you for opening up to this, no subject items that are not on your agenda. But there was a comment made at town meeting that I personally, I took it personally. And the comment was, you know, was there any backdoor deal between the Cemetery Commission and the SLAC board? And, you know, and the reason I took that personally is because all that was presented for, as a backup to that comment, was, was their conversation between two boards. Is there advocacy from the Cemetery Commission on getting something done? And these are things that I do. I go to the senior center and I talk with the seniors, you know, during breakfast to ask them to come to town meeting and vote for Marshall Park related items. I actually went there one day with Mr. Passius. Him and I were there. I have knocked on doors of residents at Chestnut Street, asking them to come out and vote for, for the Marshall Park articles, to learn more about the project. So I, I felt like that comment was a dangerous comment to be made, especially since we count so much on volunteers in town to do so much work. And we do get a lot of work done. And this work that we do comes at a personal cost. I spend many hours doing what I need to do to see, you know, things that we signed up to do, to do. I mean, I know today I sent a very long email to Heather. So it's a, what I ask is fellow residents to be mindful of this type of comments because they do have a negative effect on people that are volunteering. I really don't want to be the subject of that comment. Should, should we go for another vote for town meeting regarding Marshall Park and be accused of backdoor deals because I'm asking for support of a project? So that's my comment is that we should all think about it before we speak and think about in the context that it's what you're saying goes beyond a single subject, affects everybody. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lockwood. Do we have any other public comments this evening from the public? All right, going to public comments from the Town Manager.
I don't have a prepared public comment for tonight, but I did have an encounter at town meeting that I wish to address with the board through a separate correspondence. It was, one, someone who is a resident but also serves in capacity on town committees. So I think it was inappropriate and should be addressed, but I will address it with the board.
Thank you. Do you have any public comments from the Board?
I have one. I just want to thank volunteers who came out Sunday morning to decorate the town center. I got a sneak peek of the lights while they were being adjusted and it's, even, even though there were some tweaks, I think still to do it, it's going to look really nice. And I just want to thank folks for coming out on Sunday morning to do that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Alonso.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So a few things. First of all, I just want you to be aware that there is no video feed of Town Hall on Zoom, so both Caesar and I cannot see you guys at all. So I don't know if that can be remedied. That's number one. Number two, I wanted to alert people that tomorrow there are two Unitil public hearings, there it is, there are two Unitil public hearings tomorrow, and they are at 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM. They're both on Zoom. I'm trying to find out where you can find this. I'm sure it's on the DPU's website, but they are important avenues to speak to the Unitil rate hike request that the DPU's hearing a couple of weeks ago before Thanksgiving. They had an in-person meeting at, in Pittsburgh, I think it was at the Pittsburgh High School. Several residents and our, part of our representative delegation spoke there, as did the AG's representative and the governor's representative. So it is an important time for people to voice their opinions about this and let the DPU know how they feel about the rate hike request, about the service from Unitil, et cetera. And again, it'll be a Zoom meeting, two of them tomorrow at 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM. Lastly, just as a, as a comment back to what was said in public comment, I, I don't disagree with what was said with an added caveat that if you put in a full-page ad in a local paper for an article that doesn't have to do with your commission, and there are no articles about the commission, it certainly raises people's level of scrutiny about why it was in there. There was no Cemetery Commission article, and so how that ad was related to Article Four was very tenuous at best, and if you don't fill in that tenuous part of it, then people come to their conclusions rightly or wrongly. So while I agree that people should be careful about casting aspersions, I would say to members of other bodies, you have to be careful about how you publicize things, especially if they don't directly relate to your committee or commission. So people will draw conclusions rightly or wrongly from what is in the public arena. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Nuzzolo, any public comment this evening?
No, I don't have a public comment.
All right, want to, want to acknowledge and thank Mr. Nuzzolo for continuing to serve our country. He's in military training, and thank you for also continuing to maintain your, your duty on this side. Ms. Nuzzolo and I do speak frequently during the week, and it's a good, great public servant. So we're happy to have you on the team. Mr. Franco?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I left the public town meeting fairly furious and have since had the opportunity to collect my thoughts and prepare what I believe is a more constructive and measured statement than I might have if we had a meeting even a week ago. So with that, I just want to say the purpose of my statement here tonight is not to relitigate any decision on any particular article at town meeting. The legislature spoke, and I respect that process and its results fully. My purpose in raising a particular article is to provide specific context for illustration of a larger point. While I supported Article Four, I accept and respect the decision of the legislature, town meeting, to vote it down. That's the process. Moreover, on the substance of the matter, it cannot be said that the $986,000 in question will be going to a bad cause, not at all. What I did find highly objectionable were aspects of the discussion leading up to the vote. One member of the public in particular insinuated that at least one member of this board was a party to an inside deal with members of the Cemetery Commission. Inadvertently assisting this false narrative, in no small part, was what I characterize as an ill-advised ad, even if not strictly improper, in the Lunenburg Ledger the week or so prior. The first I heard of this ad was when it was raised during public comment at a select board meeting leading up to the special town meeting. That ad implied heavily that support for Article Four was tantamount to support for and would result in ARPA funding for the proposed cemetery, cemetery Stonewall project. That would require creative and tenuous dot connecting, not least of which being the idea that a majority of this board had predetermined that it would fund the cemetery wall. In fact, no member of this board, to my knowledge, had any preconceived notions individually as to what extent he or she would fund any project, group, or cause if indeed town meeting had voted to move the funds from the stabilization fund back to control at a select board for distribution under ARPA. What I suspect the sponsors of the ad were doing was advocating for the funds to go back to ARPA and then hoping that the select board would ultimately decide to fund the cemetery wall. The troubling thing isn't so much the resultant vote. It was the insinuation of nefarious conduct as the go-to narrative, perhaps in service of the end goal of defeating the article. I would urge members of the public to do better. If you have a position and want to argue a case for or against a policy or article, do so honestly on the merits. Each member of this board has had a turn at disagreeing with other members of this board at one time or another, myself included. But what I have never done is question the integrity of my colleagues. I find each of them to be a person of good character that ultimately has the best interests of the town as the main objective. I value the fact that there are respectful disagreements on this board. It is how minds are changed, better decisions are made, and good results are reached. I respect the fact that members of this board and members of all other boards, committees, and commissions have stood up and answered to call, the call to service. Accordingly, without clear and convincing evidence, and certainly not on the basis of politically expedient unsubstantiated narrative, I will not sit in silence as the integrity of any one of my colleagues is called into question. The beauty of town meeting government is that it is the most direct form of democracy. Those who attend are legislators. This is a responsibility that should be taken most seriously, with an understanding as to how one's conduct may serve or disserve the functionality of our government. I don't know whether or not the insinuation of misconduct was based in truly held belief or merely useful narrative, but I do know that levying or even suggesting such a charge without solid facts is irresponsible and destructive. It erodes democracy itself. When people deviate from the merits of the matters before town meeting and turn to character assassination, all that does is dissuade people of goodwill and integrity from volunteering to serve. It is toxic. It is conduct that must be vigorously called out and forcefully opposed for the greater good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franco, for those comments. I have a public comment as well. I want to acknowledge that we have a tree lighting this week on Thursday at 6:00 PM. It will be happening at the Town gazebo, and I encourage all members of the public and their children to come if they are able. Again, that's going to be this Thursday at 6:00 PM at the Town gazebo. You know, I also want to comment on town meeting. I think that, you know, we know that when we, when we came before the town with Article Four, which was again the ARPA request, you know, it's an important question to put before the town. You know, what, what we noted that evening was that, you know, we had funds that we committed for an ambulance and some DPW trucks in the tune of $986,000. And this was done really to expedite the process of those vehicles being ordered prior to the end of the fiscal year. When we learned that those vehicles were not ordered by the end of the fiscal year, the Select Board had the authority to pull the money back. We could have done that, and we could have forced a vote on special purpose stabilization funds to be used for the purpose of those vehicles. But I think that on this board that that's, you know, that's just not the nature, I think, of how anyone approaches the job, where we're all trying to do what's in the best interest of the town. And what's in the best interest of the town is to have an ambulance and a, and DPW trucks ordered as quickly as possible to meet the needs of the town. And so the question that was posed before the residents was an appropriate question. I think we all know that, you know, the public tends, tends to want to be engaged in, in how money is decided. You know, a lot of people don't like the idea of a handful of people being able to make those financial decisions, and I have not been quiet about the fact that if I was a member of Congress, I never would have approved the legislation in the first place that even gave us the ARPA money. Nonetheless, you know, I think it was an important question that came before the town. You know, what I heard after the meeting, given that I was the person who, who was the recipient of what I think was a bit of a character assault, what I heard after the meeting from several residents who, who came for the first time was that they would never come back, that they would never come back and they would never volunteer in this town, and that they really liked the town of Lunenburg until they came to that town meeting. You know, that's really unfortunate. It's unfortunate that people get that impression because of the decision by one or, or two or three people who choose to self-promote and, and take an opportunity with a lot of residents in town to then try to attack a person's character and imply some kind of, some kind of backdoor deals. You know, we have to consider the source in all things, you know, but certainly I will say that as a member of this board, you know, one thing that we're good about is we don't talk outside of meetings about votes. It's just not something we do. So we certainly advocate for our position in different areas, and that's, and that's helpful. It's helpful for there to be collaboration. One of the things that we're going to be doing tonight after this public comment period, period is hearing from the boards that, that this board appoints. And part of this is, is well timed prior to the budget so that way we can understand what the needs are, so that way they can be properly addressed. You know, collaboration is always key in all things that we do. And there's a lot of things that come out of hearing from the boards that we appoint, engaging with other elected officials. You know, being the chair of this board, the Town Manager can always attest that there are times when other elected boards and members have challenges, and sometimes the role of the Chair is to reach out to those other elected officials and to remind them of, of the respective lanes that we all have and that we all need to stay in. And so sometimes in this role, the collaboration part is what is, is, I wouldn't say sometimes, I've recognized in this role that the collaboration point is, is what really makes it all work. So to, to present as though someone's advocacy is somehow some kind of backdoor deal, it's always improper. It's always improper. You know, to attack the integrity of any public official, it's always improper. And when we have concerns with individuals, we all know that the most appropriate way to resolve a conflict from one person to another is to communicate directly with them, is to go to the source. You know, sometimes people do misunderstand things, and when you seek clarification, you know, go to the person who maybe you're having a conflict with, ask them for that clarification. I make myself available. I might put my public phone number out there, my private phone number out there for the public. I respond to emails, and I certainly am make myself available. But in these moments, you know, when we have those kinds of comments, as Mr. Lou Franco stated, you know, sometimes there are other intents, and it's not always the public good. It's unfortunate that in the matter of discourse, you know, we all see the negative comments that come out about President Biden or President Obama or President Trump or this national figure or that one. We're not national figures here. You know, I know these meetings are televised, but this isn't a television show. This is a board meeting that happens to be televised because it's in the public interest for it to be televised. And, and really the conversations that happen outside of public comments is from colleague to colleague, and it's working with one another. It's recognizing that the diversity of opinion is what makes us all better. And, and when we take an approach that, that we should not be collaborating, that we should not be discussing with one another, that board should not advocate for viewpoints, you know, it's just wrong. That's not how democracy is designed to work. And, you know, one of the things, you know, as I think of my own service, you know, I've been a public servant since I was 17 and 10 days old. You know, I was in a war zone when I was 20 years old. You know, all that is never lost in me. Every, and I, I say this often, that, you know, when I do this job, what I think about or I think about the people, the people who were my age at 20 years old in a war zone halfway across the world who died, the parents whose children never get to come home, the kid, the people who are forever 20 years old. That's the service that I think about and that I offer. So when someone attacks my integrity, I honestly don't frankly care because I think that my integrity is intact. I think anyone who knows me, anyone who interacts with me, anyone who's worked with me, understands that I value highly ethics and being a person of high moral character. It is something that matters to me, and it's my service to those who've died along the way to support our nation. So when we get those attacks, I think it speaks more of the attacker than it speaks to the person who is attacked. I think that concludes our public comments from the Board this evening. Do we have any announcements? I know I did announce the tree lighting this Thursday at 6:00 PM at the Town gazebo. Are there any other announcements this evening?
Just one, the Master Plan Steering Committee has a survey out right now that is, has been put out on social media and on the town website, so I encourage people to fill that out, and it's, they want your thoughts and ideas on what they're developing in the comprehensive master plan.
Thank you. All right. So tonight, what we're going to hear from, we have communications from other boards. So as part of the annual, as part of the policy that the Board has had in place for a while, I know we recently revisited it, and so we kind of put it a little bit more, add a little clarity to our appointment policy. But every year, the Board looks to meet with or receive a report from the boards that this Board appoints. And the purpose is to, we don't really define the purpose, but I will explain my own intent with, you know, having signed on to the recent revision. You know, I think part of, for me, the intent is to hear from these boards, to improve the collaboration, that as we get ready to go through this budget cycle, to hear what the needs are, to see how we can best address them, and to see the opportunities where we can work better together. And it's also a platform for boards who maybe don't get the publicity at their own meetings to really let the public at large know the great work that they've been doing over the past year, the great work they have planned for the upcoming year, and, and putting out that call for public involvement and public engagement. So we're going to start this process tonight with the Council on Aging and the representative that we have is Chairman Deb Lincoln.
Hi. I need to lower this always. I'm still on my tiptoes. I'm going to apologize for my voice. There's something about this room that brings out the worst in me, coughing. I guess I'm allergic to this room. Anyway.
It's us.
It's not you. It's not you. It's this room. Every time we meet in this room, I have a coughing attack. Anyway, I'm Deb Lincoln, as Michael Ray said, and I'm the chairman of the Council on Aging in Lunenburg. And I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to talk about Lunenburg COA and its accomplishments for 2023. I welcome the chance to explain a very confusing difference between, which you all know, but the public probably doesn't, between the Director of the COA, who's Sue Doherty, who runs the Lunenburg Adult Activity Center, formerly the Eagle House Senior Center, as a paid department head of the town, and our Council on Aging, which is an 11-member board appointed by you, the Select Board. We, the COA, are charged with looking out for the welfare of all the elders in the town, regardless of whether they come to the center or not. We are governed by mass general law, but even that's not clear. If you go out and look at the mass general law, you're going to be more confused than you were before you read it. So I'm glad to try to straighten that out for you a little bit. So there's a Director of the COA, that's Sue Doherty, and then there's the COA Committee, which you have appointed. This year, the COA welcomed three new members, Kathy Beal, George Martin, and Helen Balkam. We selected a new logo for the Lunenburg Adult Activity Center, Live Active, Live Well, in support of rebranding the center as a place not just for the aged, but for active members of our community who are over 50. This year, we also completed an 18-page new member orientation packet, including our policies and procedures. This was particularly tricky because the Massachusetts Council on Aging's and the Town Charter are in conflict over what our duties and the scope of our responsibilities and powers are. And the Massachusetts COA is working on that. In August, I'm really proud of this one, we started the Century Club. The Boston Post Kane is very restrictive as to who can receive it. The Century Club allows us to honor longtime Lunenburg residents who have turned 100. Our first recipient was Kate Prebet, and next month, we will be adding Fred Cuddy and Mario Patakiola. COA members are very active in donating their time. They are involved in the Veterans Breakfasts, Discovery Center for Civic Engagement, Memory Training, the Memory Cafe, the Center Library, gardening, outdoor decorating, and kitchen help. The major fundraiser of the year, and by the way, COA members cannot fundraise, however, they can contribute to fundraisers. So the major fundraiser of the year is the Formal Tea. COA members participated as tablescapers. They sold fascinators and bakery items, coordinated raffles, baked, and photographed the event. And since that's kind of a woman's thing, our photographer was a man. Members provide, provide movies for weekly showings. They donated the patio pavilion sod and had the shed painted. Members are representatives on PAC, on the Master Plan Committee, and the 300th Anniversary Committee. And we would like to thank you for providing Lou Franco as our constant attendant, good humor, and much appreciated liaison. He is truly an asset to our COA. What can you do for us? Money. The budget for the LAAC is a tiny, tiny sliver of our town's budget, yet our seniors represent a huge portion of our population. They have contributed decades of our, of their lives to our town. We need to support them. We are very appreciative of your efforts to begin a tax relief to the town. What we could use right now is some help with benefited positions with better salaries and more hours. I can speak to one example firsthand. I volunteer in the kitchen. There should be a full-time meal site manager, benefited position, and an assistant meal site manager. We are not getting applications because the hours and the wages are not attractive. Please help put funding into place in town where our seniors can go for relaxation, companionship, food, mental and physical stimulation. For some, it is their whole world. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will just ask if there's any questions of you in my remaining, Mrs. Lincoln. I'm going to turn to the members of the Board. I'm going to go, just for the purpose of tonight, I'm going to start with Mr. Alonso and Mr. Nuzzolo, just because they're on Zoom, and then we'll go to the members in the room. So, Mr. Alonso, any questions or comments?
No questions. I just want to thank Ms. Lincoln for her, her words for her committee. I truly appreciate all the work that her committee and the whole center does for the seniors in town, and I hope that service continues. They do a great job at all different aspects in reaching all people of all senior ages as they've retitled the, the organization or the Eagle House to the Adult Activity Center, and it continues to grow and expand, and it's a marvelous gem in town. So thank you, Deb, for all. So thank you, Deb, for all you do. I'm saying that to extend to the rest of your board.
All right, Mr. Nuzolo.
Thank you, Deb. So you pointed out that the budget of the Adult Activity Center is disproportionately small, considering the size of the population that they serve, so I just want to echo that. And I also want to thank you for highlighting how the staffing issues have affected the Council on Aging and the services that they provide. So, you know, we've talked about that, and it's important for us to hear specifically from, you know, you as an example of how that actually affects the services that we provide. So no questions, but...
Thank you. And any comments or questions from this board?
I have no questions. Again, just thank you. I am amazed when I get the newsletter. Actually, we get two cents to our house. You can send just one if you want to make notes, save a stamp. The resources that are available are just, I'm just in awe with how much is done there already, and knowing how shorthanded and how tight the budget is. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to recognize and thank you for all the wonderful work that you and the Council on Aging do. And as you know, every, each member of this board has their, there's a lot of moving parts, right? Each of us, you know, liaises to various boards and committees and, and has, you know, aspects that are of this job that are less ideal than others, but, and I've expressed to you in the past that my favorite aspect of this job is working with the Council on Aging and being there every month, so.
Thank you.
I do look forward to those meetings, and every time I walk out of those meetings, I feel very positive about what I'm doing here, so.
Thank you.
You know, so those are high points. There are troughs and peaks, valleys and peaks on this job. I'm always on a peak when I walk out of those meetings.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. I want to thank you as well for being here with us this evening. I think that you've given us some pretty concrete ideas. I think that kind of, I do have a question for you, though. You mentioned the Century Club, and how can the town be supportive on funding for that? Or, or what, can you explain a little bit more about what that program looks like?
Well, it's just begun, and our first one was kind of flying by the seat of our pants. How that happened was, you know, Elena in the center, who had Elena's gourmet grocery, she texted me and said, "My mom's turning 100 in July, and she wants to know if she's the oldest person in town." And I said, "Well, unfortunately, she's not," and that person has the Boston Post Kane. And I thought about it a little, and I said, "You know what? She's been with us for a long, long time, and we need to celebrate her." So I called Elena back, and I said, "Let me see what we can do. Would she be up for a party?" Brought it before the Council on Aging. They all unanimously said, "We need to do something." So we got together and had coffee and cake, called Elena back and said, "How many people do you want to bring for this celebration?" And it just started out with Beth Walsh came representing Senator Cronin. We got her a citation. I've recently gone to Eagle Trophy and ordered a plaque, a 12-by-16 plaque with 24 places for us, because we're going to have a lot more, I'm sure. We're living a lot longer now with our Live Active, Live Well. We're going to have tons of people coming to this age. And so right now, we're just, I'm personally funding a lot of this because I think it's the right thing to do. I did ask for the town seal and couldn't get it, so we're going to make up a Council on Aging seal to put on these plaques. And you can just be supportive by maybe coming to the events and maybe honoring these people with a signature, a petition, a card, anything you can do. Lou has the dates, and maybe talking it up. I'll give you the dates as well. You can talk about them at the select board meetings before they have their little celebrations. That would be outstanding.
No, it sounds like, that's a great idea. I think an acknowledgement from, you know, the executive board on, you know, the residents who've, who've made it to 100. I mean, I think with my lifestyle choices, I don't think I'm going to get there, but, but that is quite the accomplishment. So I think that that's, if we can work together on that to make sure that comes forward, so that way we can provide some form of citation, some letter, some kind of acknowledgement, that'd be really helpful. And I mean, I think that the last time we talked about the budget, I think where we stand is we're still at a fraction of a percentage that goes towards roughly 28% to 30% of our town through the senior, senior services or through the Adult Activity Center. And, I mean, money's always tight, but I mean, that's clearly not enough. You know, and I think that that's, you know, we're getting a third of our money from people who we're in turn returning less than a fraction of a percentage of benefits to. And that's, that's not fair, and that's not reasonable, but I do want to acknowledge the great work you guys have done. And then, you know, of course, Deb, you know that I have nothing but deep love for you and Pete, and certainly know the caliber that you two offer and the sincerity that you bring. And so I just want to thank you as well for the work that you guys have done. And I'll hear here on Mr. Franco. I mean, I met Mr. Franco when he was running for the seat, and he is an outstanding person. So hear here on that.
Well, thank you for lending him to us.
All right.
And thank you for anything you can do.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
All right. Next, we're going to hear from Mr. Pete Lincoln, representing the 300th Anniversary Committee.
It's a cold night, and I just learned the national tree just blew over.
Yes. They were fixing it, though.
My hands are in circulation yet. I am Pete Lincoln. I live on 46 and 52 Hemlock Drive, and I'm the newly appointed, the elected chairman of the 300th Anniversary Committee. It's temporary because we decided our slate of officers would only be elected through next December. Since this is a five-year appointment, no one wanted to be burdened with the knowledge that they're going to have to carry through five years. We may be reelected, but currently, I'm not chairman until next December. This is the third anniversary committee I've worked on. So the next one, I'll be 100, going to be the, join the Century Club. But I've been thinking a lot about how Lunenburg has changed since 1978, when I was involved in the first one, and trying to figure out what's changed about it and why that's happened. In 1978, there were 8,000 people in town. Most of those people were still long generational families, still a farm town, and getting together was a frequent occurrence. I had to have a seat reserved for me at the town meetings. When we put on a pageant, 700 people attended and 100 had to sit on the floor. At one of our town meetings, when we were thinking of merging with Shirley High School, Shirley, Shirley, we had to have an extended version in the gym where 400 more people could attend, because 1,000 people attended the town meeting. I attended the town meeting here two weeks ago. At the end of it, there were 61 people, which is one half of 1% of our voters. So now there are 12,000 people. 4,000 probably of the original eight have gone, so two out of every three people in this town are new to the town, and they're not terribly interested in the town history or its past.
Can you give me that number one more time? How many of?
Well, there were 8,000 in 1978, when we did the first, the first pageant. Estimated, half of those have passed or moved on, at least 4,000. There are currently over 12,000. So that's two-thirds of the people that live in town don't have a history in the town that goes back to being generational, let's put it that way. Secondly, all over the country, electronic media has changed us. We no longer meet. We Zoom. We no longer get together and talk. We text. And that divides people. It's progress in some ways, and I think a step backwards in some ways, because I love to be, go out and watch kids playing kickball and fooling around outside instead of playing on the devices. That's nothing we can change. But to me, the biggest change that's happened to this town, and it hasn't been talked about a lot, we lost Wayland Park. Wayland Park put Lunenburg on the map in this New England area for 100 years. There used to be a trolley directly from Boston to Wayland Park to bring people out. We had a ballroom, which the best dance bands in the country came to in the 30s and 40s. Benny Goodman played here. And in the 50s and 60s, we had a theater, a summer stock theater run by a Broadway producer named Guy Palmerton. I saw Shelley Winters at P. O. One Afternoon. There she was, in Lunenburg. So with the loss of that park, we lost a piece of our identity that we've never gotten back, and that really brought, I think, a lot of pride in this town, as you people have talked about Groton having this new arts festival place, and everybody, "Oh, that was great." "You're from Lunenburg?" Oh, I go to Wayland all the time. I used to hear that all the time. And so those three things, I think the town has changed. And so I take our charge as the chairman of this committee to try to bring people back together, to come up with things that people can do, which will be fun, not just committees and not just raising taxes or meetings that are formal, but things that can be, get people together to do things that'll be interesting. So what we did after a terrible start, when we lost my good friend Stan Barney, which I have not gotten over yet, we had a productive meeting last night and determined about 25 different types of gatherings we could have. And what I'd like to do at this bully pulpit here is to read the names of the people on our committee and some of the activities we're going to do, and please invite anyone in the public who'd be interested in helping out with any of these things to get in touch with any of these people. We had 55 people on the committee in 2003, 11 officially, and 44 others that were assistants, not at committees, but just assistants to give ideas, help out, do creative work. So our committee currently, the people that are volunteering to do work are Michelle Belisa, Laura Brzezinski, Kathy Clark, Kathy Como, Lois Filio, Don Johnson, Deb and Pete Lincoln, Chris Sullivan, and Bill Tyler. Any of those people could be glad to hear from any of you in helping us out. We have set three dates so far, just three. There will be a first-night celebration on December 31st, 2027. What happens there is that we open up the center, and we have a show here in this room, hopefully you're still here, in this room, where there's music provided, jokes, and at 11 o'clock or so, there's a meeting outside, official speeches given, documents from the state, and midnight sharp, just entering the year, we'll shoot fireworks off from Marshall Park. Last time, I remember all the buildings were open, kids did art work shows in the church. Elena's open that day, and then we televised it live for her first show. I don't know what will be, will be there then. The second one is our special anniversary party. Lunenburg was incorporated on August 1st of 1728. August 1st this year, that year comes on a Tuesday, so we'll be doing it on 7/28/28. And what that will involve, fireworks and cake, and whatever else we can come up with, but that is a set date. And the third is the grand parade, which traditionally we've held the first weekend after Labor Day, 9/9/28. So those, those are the only three that we have firm. And I thought I'd just put out some of the ideas, not all of them, but some of the ideas that we've come up with and see if they intrigue any people to come and join us. Take two buses or three buses to Wusok's, have a Wusok's night. I'm sure Lunenburg would be featured there. A main seat stroll, maybe some of you remember the stroll that Deb and I tried to do a few years back. A Halloween cemetery walk. One of the local towns that my father was born in has, on Halloween, people standing of ice, gravestones, telling the story of the people that's buried there, and town people come around and listen to them. Not necessarily those specific people. I played a minister and told the children, if you went to church in the 1700s, what sort of service you would have to sit through. It's great fun. And we have, with the South Cemetery, all sorts of folks we could do that with. A town fair, garden tours, a sports fortnight, which would include races, pickleball, all the different sports we have, golf tournaments and so forth. A couchia poker, which we had a couple times, which intrigued the people who had never heard of it, like Mr. Franco. Let's see, I said, yeah, old home days, that was, something goes back 150 years, they did that. A town picnic, a farm-to-table supper. Historical Society is going to try to do a program every month. A time capsule, and my favorite one, and I'd like to address this to Mr. Alonso and his quiz team, a trivia quiz night on how well you know Lunenburg. So the people that think they know Lunenburg well, I'll put, put them up to it. And the wicked smart folks, here's a question right now, and that's what I'll conclude with. What's the only road in Lunenburg that starts with the letter D? I'm waiting for Tom's answer.
Do we have a day? I don't know. I don't know. That's a good question.
Looking for an answer?
Do you know it, Mr. Alonso?
I would say Dana Street.
That's correct. Good for you.
What's the answer?
Dana Street.
Oh.
It's the beginning of Wayland Road, off to the right.
Okay.
I don't want to lose any luster in your eyes, Mr. Lincoln.
I used to ask trivia to my classes on extra credit points in, on exams, and I could stick them on that one, and they were so angry because they would live in the neighborhood.
Not even...
Because Dana Street only has two houses on it, it's Long and Short Street, dead end. What do you think else I could tell you?
All right. Well, I, I think, thank you for that, for that information. Again, I want to turn it over to Mr. Alonso and Mr. Nuzolo, if they have any questions or comments.
Thanks, Pete. I think that's a great presentation. I think you guys are after, are after a good start. I liked all the ideas. I will certainly do my part on, over the next years, to help out where I can, and I think that your energy and your vision of the committee will be very important, and I think you really put the best foot forward tonight, so I love, I love all the ideas so far. Thank you.
I don't have any questions, but I love all the ideas you have for community events. Looking forward to watching it all come together, so thanks for the update.
Great. And any comments or questions on this board?
No, I think it sounds like you're off to a great start, and yeah, I agree. I like the ideas that you've come up with already.
I'm counting on you all to be on one of these crews. Pick one you like.
Oh, I will.
I was there last evening watching the sausage being made, so I have nothing to add, just thank you, so.
Yeah, well, I have...
He went home and looked up couchia poker on...
Well, yeah, I had it explained to me. Sounds interesting.
Well, I have four years to get my gardens in order, so.
And it's five years out, and we're already getting smoked on trivia. I mean, you know.
Well, thank, thank you, Mr. Lincoln. Yes, you know, I will be coming off of this board in 2025, and certainly will be looking for the, the next thing to get involved in, and something a little more fun.
It's fun.
So, yeah, this, I think all these ideas sound excellent. I think, you know, I can see myself participating in, in just about all of it, and I think these are really solid ideas. I know that it's been, you know, it's tricky nowadays, given how litigious everyone is and, and all the, all the requirements, that it's just a lot more, it's a lot more challenging to have a committee with, you know, 50 people on it. And, and I know that something like this requires a lot of engagement, so I really hope that everyone at home who's hearing this, who's, who heard that excellent presentation will come out and reach out. And if I can just ask you to say one more time the names of the people on the committee, that way those people at home can, can think, "Hey, do I know this person? How do I contact them? What's the best way?" And do you, on the town website, have emails up? I don't know if we've issued town emails to the members of the committee or not.
Everyone should have a town email account.
I think they do already.
Okay, excellent.
Okay, Michelle Belisa, you might know from the Boys and Girls Club. Laura Brzezinski is on the school committee. Kathy Clark has been on several committees. Kathy Como is our dog officer. She's been there 40 years and was on the last two committees with me. Lois Filio is in the post office. Let's know her. Don Johnson was Don Proctor of the fabulous Proctor family. Deb and Pete Lincoln are on TV occasionally, right here. Chris Sullivan is on the Parks Commission, and Bill Tyler is on the Historical Society. So they're all involved in other committees as well.
All right.
And can be reached there.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Lincoln, for the presentation, and thank you for your continued service.
And I will say one other thing, we're not looking for a lot of money. I'm going to try to fund as much of it as we can ourselves.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay warm.
It's a little chilly in here tonight. All right. Next, we are going to hear from PAC, Mr. Steve Walker. Good to see you.
Thank you. I should mention that 40% of our committee are actually here tonight because Mr. Lincoln is also on the PAC committee, and we are just five. I'm truly grateful I don't have to try and run 50 people on a committee. Not be simple. I'm talking about, can you bring the presentation up somewhere, please? It should be, is it on your machines as well? I don't know.
It's coming up.
So there you go. So, there you go. And if you press the button one more time. Okay, well, I have a picture of some of the people, some of the equipment, there it is. Just from a historical perspective, when I came to the town some ten years ago, so I'm one of those newcomers, I joined PAC because partly I had some relevant experience, and partly because it's a good way to get to know people in the town. Accidentally, I became chair of the committee and have been for quite a while now, so. Our ongoing activities, so this isn't just this year's work, we're, we're involved typically with the finance, the budget, and we do expenditure review with Joe, who runs the department. And we also act as an advisory group for Joe and the people who work for Joe. Joe's the manager. If you look at the expertise we have on the committee, which is kind of curious, we have somebody with a history in HR, we have somebody with music and audio experience, we have a drone pilot and a journalist, somebody who comes out of the video systems technology area, and also we have program talent on the committee. So two people, at least on the committee, are involved with programs that are made for PAC. More specifically for finance, the year-specific activities, we do the, we've done the financial year twenty-four budget, which we create with Joe. One thing we particularly try to manage is to ensure that our operations expenses for the year don't exceed our expected income for the year. And just to be clear, our budget money comes from a franchise fee from Comcast rather than the principal town budget. We present that as needed, and monthly, we, at our meeting, we review the expenditures and try to track what's been going on. We also proposed and arranged, we have an enterprise fund, which is money being kept, ready for us to have our new studio space. It's only the first time I've mentioned that. That money was generating six thousand dollars per year, which seemed unreasonable. So we worked with the treasurer of the town, and she worked with Bartholomew, who's an advisor, and invested the money. So instead of six thousand per year, we are now generating about eight thousand quarterly. So that's about thirty-two thousand a year. We can't predict how it goes quarter to quarter, but it's securely invested in bonds and is basically going into our enterprise fund to try and keep up with inflation, because when we get to the, equipping the studio space, and the labor that's needed to do that, that's steadily going up by virtue of inflation. And we are not getting more capital money from Comcast at this point. We have another five years, I think, on our contract, and it's getting more difficult to actually get money from Comcast. So we're trying to be conservative, we're trying to be well-prepared for doing that. We did create, make the presentation for the ARPA funding. One of the things that is targeted at is to try and improve the audio system that we have in here, because I know a lot of people would like that to happen, so that's one of the items under ARPA we're still working on. On another area, at our last meeting, we moved to approve the change from non-exempt to exempt for Joe, who's the manager. So she's on a par with the other departmental heads. It's been that way ever since I've known her, so that's been done. But to do that, we had to do a budget review because of her salary situation. She was paid hourly, and as non-exempt, she would get overtime, which she was doing about six hours a week. So we had to ensure that as that process went forward, that was taken into account, and it wasn't an accidental pay cut for her, which could easily have happened. We did move our meetings from the studio where we used to meet, which is in TC Passios, as I'm sure you're aware, to get better access, and it was, one of our committee members was having trouble with the, the light and the way into the building. We undertake studio visits, so we work with other studios around, in particular, as we're looking to improve our studio equipment. We visit other studios, see what's worked well for them and what hasn't, and learn from that. We give technology support to the department. We created the system that is now used for town meeting, where we have four cameras. We actually take a direct link from the presentation computer, and we now have a direct link from the voting computer, so we can put these up properly without pointing a camera at a PowerPoint slide that's gone through a projector, and every step you lose resolution. When I first came here, town meeting had one camera and one person, and that was the town meeting. So we defined a six-channel system. Because we were using a lot of wireless rather than cables everywhere, we set up a test in the studio, for which committee members were hands-on doing that. Also visited Pepperell because they had one of the pieces of equipment that they were using that wasn't working quite right for us. So it's nice to have other studios around that we can just go to. A lot of that equipment can be taken directly out to use for sports and things like that, so we can have multi-camera presentations. And the last slide, almost. Mass Access is an organization in Massachusetts for all public access-type people get together. And one of the things in particular that they are looking towards is trying to get what's called a streaming bill colloquially through. As people stop using linear TV or regular cable TV and are moving to streaming, in many cases, they're actually still using the same equipment, the same cable runs down your street, but they're taking it over the internet rather than through the cable system. There's a bill in place, which I've spoken about before, so we try and stay on top of that, support as needed, to ensure that in the future, if our revenue goes down because video services are going down, that we have an alternative stream of revenue to keep us running, coming from streaming video. It's intended to be kind of equivalent, but nobody really knows yet, so we shall see how that goes. We have got our program guide put in the Fitchburg Sentinel, which, one thing we do not get is electronic program guide, which I would love, so you can't find out on your Channel Eight or Channel Nine what programs are going to be running, because Comcast won't let us do that. Another thing we do is policies. We did two so far this year, one of which is for drones. It's a very simple policy, says "don't." The problems with drones are insurance, lots of other issues around, who owns what, and everything else. So we have to be very careful. If somebody offers us drone video that they have taken, but not at the committee's or Joe's request, so they've just done it as a person, they can offer us video, just like any of you can take your iPhone and shoot a video of anything you like, and offer it to us, and we can use it. But we will not, unfortunately, because of the situation with things like insurance, we don't own a drone, we're not planning on owning a drone or requiring one. And personal equipment use is another problem, because we have people who have a lot of their own equipment at home, and we really need them to be using the studio's equipment, because then, again, covered by insurance, and it meets the standards we need, because our equipment is all compatible with other pieces of our equipment. We had one legal issue come up, which we were involved with, which is the right to record, because there was a water department meeting where they were having difficulties with where the PAC person wanted to put the microphone to properly record the meeting. So that was dealt with through the town attorney, and as far as I know, is working correctly. The other thing you asked for, for this presentation, is a recommendation from PAC, and I'm fairly sure you can guess what it's going to be. And that is, PAC is ready to continue its contributions to the design of the new studio, but esteemed by the lack of defined space and a schedule for availability. So if there's any way you can do that, I know I've been at some of the meetings and been trying to work this stuff out, if there's any way we can do it. One issue we have is because we're a small town, so if you look at a town with fifty thousand people, their budget is about a million dollars, roundabout. You look at our town, our budget is about two hundred thousand dollars. That significantly influences the number of people that you can have. So we use technology instead of people, as far as possible, we take advantage of it. But we can't invest in some of this without knowing where we're going to be, so it can be properly installed, integrated, people can learn to use it. So we're trying to do a better job. I'm totally unbiased, but I think we do a good job. But really, I would love to have the space.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Walker, for the presentation and the information. And again, I'm going to turn to Mr. Alonso and then Mr. NuZolo.
So thank you, Mr. Walker. I work with Steve in many different regards on the Cable Advisory Committee, when we renewed the cable contract. While never being a PAC member, I've worked closely with many of the members, and I know, and all of us, I think, on the board know full well how many people watch this program and other events that they, that they televise, and all their, their employees and volunteers work to televise, not only governmental meetings, but the, the public access channel, the educational channel and everything. And year by year, the improvements and the, the far-reaching programming expansion has been really remarkable, so I want to applaud Mr. Walker, and I'm saying it to him on behalf of the whole committee, applaud them and their entire staff, managed by Joe Toll, who do a fantastic job there in every different aspect. There is not one meeting I can go to, or very few meetings that they're not there, and at all hours, and behind the scenes, doing the finishing work on jobs. So thank you for all that you continue to do, Mr. Walker. I'm glad you accidentally got to be chair, and I hope you accidentally stay for a few more years.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions for you. I appreciate the work you do, but I also really appreciate the constant effort to improve the services that you provide. It's more than clear every time you talk to us that, you know, that's constant work, that's always ongoing, so thank you for sharing your update with us.
You're welcome.
Yeah, my only comments are, I think this is fantastic resource. I agree, you, you do a great job, I mean, you as a collective group do a fantastic job in, in providing this resource, and I think, you know, your presentation tonight, as well as the presentation for the ARPA, was clearly well-thought-out, very, you know. I remember you even reduced the amount that you were asking for after everyone went back and reassessed everything, so that's very much appreciated, how much thought and work goes into.
You're welcome, thank you.
I just want to thank you, one, for the presentation, but also for all the work that you do, and recognize that what PAC does is critical, and a critical work that provides information to the public, you know, helps our democracy, our local democracy, and cannot be taken for granted.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to, again, echo all the comments that have been said already. You know, I, I think I shared a couple of years ago a time that I was in, I was at Hanscom Air Force Base, and I was there getting something, and I happened to stop by the subway, and, and, and one of the people working there was, "Oh, I, I see you on TV." And, and I'm like, "Oh, I think you have me confused," you know. Of course, I'm at Hanscom Air Force Base. And, and it ends up that it was a resident who lives here in town who watches our meetings. And I think that there's a lot of people who watch our meetings who don't otherwise participate in, in town meeting. I know that some of my childhood friend Lynn, her parents have it on all the time. I'm sure they're going to hear me saying this. And so I think that you guys are providing such a vital service. I want to acknowledge the camera upgrade. That was, that was done, I think that was a couple of years ago. I think that was really beneficial. I'd commented on that quietly with Joe, and the issue is, as an African-American, a lot of videos, when you sit next to someone who is Caucasian, that the African-American person ends up looking like a black blob. And so it, it, it's common with a lot of camera systems, a lot of the newer ones are better, but I had encountered that when I was going back and watching the meetings, that in, in shots where I was sitting next to a colleague who was not of the same skin color, that I would look like a blob. And so I think that the camera upgrade was really respectful, necessary, and I think it presents us in a, in a truer way, and so I'm also specifically thankful for that. And then the, the space comment. So as a member of the Municipal Building Design Committee, the Municipal Building Design Committee has committed to ensuring that there's space provided for PAC in the future plan. I think that the current challenge, or the status of the current challenge, is that we had envisioned, as you know, there, we've gone through multiple iterations since the eighties, over what to do about our buildings. And the recent rounds started off with TC Passios being this combined center. As we really dug into those details, came up with, how do we use this as the, ultimately it came down to cost, I think we were at a thirty, roughly a thirty million dollar cost for TC Passios, and that wasn't including any work on this building, Town Hall, or Ritter. So we've taken a new approach that prioritizes rehabilitating and sustaining Town Hall, Ritter Building, building a new Town Hall Annex. That is the approach that we are going to be presenting to the town. The question is on TC Passios, that we've, where we are still unclear is, there seems to be overlap between rebuilding or rehabilitating TC Passios. So assuming that all town offices are, and school offices are located at, you know, across the street at Ritter Building in the new Town Hall Annex, assuming that all primary meeting space is in this building, which then means that the runs from your control room are a lot shorter to get to the floors below, which is a cost reduction part, and also goes to the historical, the history of meeting houses, that what that leaves then are PAC needs, voting needs, food pantry needs, and some, some additional staff space needs, storage needs. And so the question is, is that, is the TC Passios the best location for that, which is the current kind of envisioned plan, or is Turkey Hill a better place for it? And so right now, we are in this, in this conversation with the school committee to kind of finalize what this, or make more progress on what this Phase Three looks like of this plan. But I think we all have identified and recognized that you guys need a space, and you need it soon, and that it can't wait ten years for us to kind of sort through a lot of this stuff. So we are committed to working through that, and I will be sure to invite you to a coming meeting when we have more conversations directly related to PAC.
To a certain extent, I feel, I've been chartered with saying this word, the schedule of it being available is critical for us to be able to start planning what we need to.
Yep.
So the sooner we know that, that's very important. Where it is, is slightly less important, but it is important, so, thank you.
Thank you. Conservation Commission, we will have Ms. Mary Wilson, and I don't see Mr. Bob Pease with you, but if he joins remotely, we will say, "Mr. Bob Pease." Mary, good to see you.
Hi, thanks for having me here. I'm Mary Wilson, as you said, Chair of the Conservation Commission, and so I'm going to just read the prepared annual report.
Thank you.
Town of Lunenburg Conservation Commission is a seven-member commission, each appointed to three-year terms by the Select Board, whose duties are to three-year terms by the Select Board, whose duties are codified under the Conservation Commission Act, Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8C. The Commission enforces the Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act, Mass. General Law, Chapter 131, Section 40, and Chapter 238 of the local bylaws for the protection of wetlands. The Commission also manages and controls town-owned lands retained for conservation and passive recreation use. The year 2023 was, as last year, one of a very busy and active agenda containing both public hearings and meetings for a wide range of projects. That it went from commercial developments, subdivisions, small family upkeep projects, and larger-scale industrial and commercial proposals. The Commission also held numerous inspections with the Conservation Administrator on weekends prior to meetings to familiarize ourselves with the upcoming proposals that would appear on the agenda. The Commission continues to work with the town on familiarizing itself with the continually changing stormwater mandates from the EPA and working towards compliance, both by procedure and with any necessary codifications, as well as aiding with the community implementation of MS-4 regulations. The Conservation Commission continues to implement forest stewardship plans developed using grants as outlined in the last three annual reports. The upcoming management effort will be concentrated in the Reno property, which is off of Northfield Road. The stewardship plan for the Hollis Road property is oriented towards enhancing bird wildlife habitat in conjunction with the Mass. Audubon Society as part of the DCR Forestry for the Birds program. The funding from the sale of harvested timber provides the seed money to make it possible for the Commission to apply for grants to maintain and improve Lunenburg's conservation lands. In 2023, the Conservation Commission was the beneficiary of the Sean H. Kelly Estate, which will further support ongoing maintenance and improvements. The pollinator habitat portion of the Hollis Hill property provides for a diversity of native flowers throughout the growing season. The habitat promotes insect-laying and nesting sites for pollinators. This unique gem provides food sources for native birds and numerous native insects, including bees and butterflies. Native pollinators support the ecosystems that help control soil erosion and oxygenate our air. In July, this past July, the Pollinator Habitat hosted an open house, which was widely attended both by residents of Lunenburg and many surrounding communities. We're really thankful for the dedicated volunteers that support the Lunenburg Community Pollinator Habitat. It's an all-volunteer activity, and we we love the turnout that we get there. The Conservation Commission has made significant progress on your here trail map signs at the trailheads and trail intersections to expand the safe use of Lunenburg's existing trail network. In April of 2023, Conservation partnered with the Parks Department to coordinate a month of Earth Day events across Lunenburg. The joint project improved 13 properties and brought 161 man-hours of improvement to Lunenburg. In June of 2023, the Conservation Commission was awarded a Mass. Trails Grant to fund planning of parking areas in the Table Rock and Reno Conservation Area and improved access to the Harold Harley Wildlife Viewing Platform in the Cowdery Conservation Area. The Lunenburg Snow Riders continued to support the maintenance and improvement of the trail systems on Lunenburg's conservation lands. As part of their recreational Trails Grant award from 2022, the Snow Riders recently completed the Lane Conservation Area Trail Improvement Project with aid from Bayer Construction, Dan De Leo Plumbing, Gatsby Grounds, M. Proctor Masonry, and the assistance of 17 volunteers, which included a virtual parade of personally-owned tractors. The Commission would like to express our gratitude for all the hard-working volunteers that worked throughout the year so enthusiastically in maintaining and improving Lunenburg's conservation lands. The Commission has also continued to work closely with Lake Shirley and Hickory Hills on the implementation of their lake management plans. These plans set goals and action items designed to better give a picture of the overall health of lakes and divine various strategies to ensure continued protection of these valuable resources. During the year of 2023, a change in administration has occurred along with additional staffing shortages and changes. In July, Conservation Administrator Anna Petri resigned. Approximately May, Conservation Administrative Assistant Rebecca Manley resigned. In July, Ashley Denio was hired to backfill Rebecca. In October, the land manager, Adam Bernie, resigned. And as you may know, Adam was the frontline management support for the Conservation Commission staff and has been providing, had been providing direction to the interim Conservation Administrator. There have been several interim administrators hired to bridge the gap in support since Anna's departure. There has also been an interim clerical resource provided to mitigate the backlog in meeting minutes. There is still a backlog of Conservation Administrator actions, and in some cases, significant delays in the issuance of documentation, as examples certificates of compliance, orders of conditions, administrative determinations, et cetera. The Conservation Commission has been anxiously awaiting the start of our new Conservation Administrator, Sophia Dorro, who started yesterday. The Commission wants to thank all the town agencies for a great year, and we look forward to many more. Very respectfully submitted on behalf of the Conservation Commission.
And thank you, Mrs. Wilson, for that presentation. I'll turn to the members of the board. We'll start with Mr. Nuzzolo.
Hi, Mary. Good to see you, at least virtually. As someone who really cares about the environment, you know, we also live in such a beautiful town, I really think the work that you guys do is probably some of the most important work done by any board commission. And I'm sorry to anyone that I might offend by saying that. The conservation land and the trails are probably my favorite thing about living in town. And it's really shocking, the amount of work that volunteers do to maintain that, so that we can all enjoy, you know, this beautiful area that we live in. So I can't even express how grateful I am to all the volunteers and the work they do. So, you know, thank you for the constant work that you do, and thanks for coming in and sharing your update with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. And from this, from this board, in private.
I just want, I watched quite a few of the Conservation Commission meetings, and I know they're very long. I know you guys have, you know, it's been a rough year being shorthanded with and having, you know, interim staff fill in and and things like that, and and you commented on getting behind. But I appreciate all the work that has gone in to to keep things moving. And I see a lot of of the members going out there and actually clearing trails. And I, the passion is very obvious with members on the on the committee. And so I want to thank everyone for their time and their their energy that they put into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I thank you for your presentation, but also, in the early to mid 90s, I was on a Conservation Commission in South Bridge, Massachusetts. And that's three decades ago. And, you know, I like, I wasn't in a leadership, I was not in a leadership position on that Conservation Commission. And I would describe our Conservation Commission as more reactive. We sort of processed what came in and and and, you know, we served our function. But this Conservation Commission in Lunenburg has expanded my vision of what a conservation, what a proactive Conservation Commission can do. And I'm just really impressed and inspired by the work of this Conservation Commission. And I thank you and the entire Commission for the valuable work you do. You know, my wife and I, we we walk the trails periodically. We recently went, and we like the the entries, the kiosks, I guess you would call them, and just the constant improvements. And we we walk these and we get lost in them. And and I've commented to my wife a couple of times, and, you know, she completely, people go on vacation for resources like this. Like, when we go on vacation to Virginia or wherever and we hike trails, I mean, we have this kind of beauty right here. And I think sometimes people don't appreciate what's in their immediate backyard. I mean, I grew up as the crow flies, just as, again, I'm going off on tangents here now, but I grew up 15 miles from the Statue of Liberty. I got there for the first time ever in 2016. We take for granted, when we took our son to New York, we take for granted what is in our own backyards. And people should really open their eyes. I mean, Boston, Boston's a treasure. It's a world treasure, Boston, we live 40 miles from. And but people need to look right where they live and and make right where they live better. And you do that, and you do make where we live better, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you for those comments from all the members, and thank you, Mary, for the really detailed presentation. You know, I think that the conservation land in our town is is a significant part of the character of our town. It's what draws people to want to stay here, is what makes people want, or what draws people to want to live here, I think is what helps people want to stay here. And, you know, Lou just hit something about vacation. It's the constant struggle that we have in our own household of figuring out where to go on vacation, because we recognize that we live in an area where many people want to come every single summer.
Right.
And so when you're leaving, you know, Massachusetts, and specifically Lunenburg, it's like, well, where do you go? That's that's just as nice, or, or, you know, so we often end up going to cities to vacation, because I think we live in a really beautiful area, and that's in large part due to the work that you and the members of the Conservation Commission, Snow Riders Club, all the different volunteers do. So I just want to thank you for the work. I know that we've we've focused a lot over the last couple of years on wanting the Conservation Commission to be more customer-driven, and I think that you guys have have focused on that. I do drives around town frequently to look at status of roads, to look at some of our properties, and you can't help but notice the improvements in the conservation land. You know, driving down Northwood Road with the Table Rock signs and, you know, it definitely is engaging. And I think that I'm also part of like a regional economic, a new regional economic development kind of team, and and we're all kind of focused on how do we, how do we maximize the resources that every town uniquely offers regionally, so that way we can be really appealing to someone who wants to come out here to give them ideas of all the things that they can do in different communities. And Lunenburg is unique, as I'm sure you know, in the in the in the breadth and variety of conservation land, how well-maintained it is and how appealing it is. And and I think that as we think of what our town's going to be in 50 years, or 75, or 100 years, the work that you guys are doing, I think is going to be foundational to the character of who we continue to be. So thank you for all that.
Thank you. Along the lines of being more customer-friendly, one of the initiatives the Conservation Commission has been discussing in our meetings is doing another informational flyer. I think historically, we have done that, you know, infrequently, but have done that in the tax, tax bills that go out. And so we'd like to do that again sometime in the new year, because we have run into, you know, just through violations and enforcements, a lot of people that genuinely don't know about the Wetlands Protection Act. And, you know, we don't really feel like it's our obligation to put that in everybody's face every day, but it would be nice to ensure that all of our residents get, you know, an update. We already have a brochure that we've updated from the last, last time we did it, which I think was two or three years ago, if I recall correctly. So that is something that we would be looking for some budget support to do again in the new year.
That'd be excellent. You know, something that Mr. Lincoln said earlier today is about, you know, using the 300th Anniversary Committee Committee as a means to kind of bring people together. You know, some of, yeah, I've lived in Lunenburg since I was 10 years old, and I did move away, I will say that, for the military. Lunenburg remained my home of residence, because my family was here, and now they're not. But, excuse me, my point in mentioning this is, you know, some of our tone here in town has changed a lot. I think that over the last, I've noticed over the last 10 years or so, it it has become this kind of fight culture in certain, certain corners of, we need to fight. And and it would be good for us to kind of use the conservation land that we have as an opportunity to help bring us together. We need to have more opportunities to unite and set up to fight. You know, and things are always handled better when we find ways to unite. And I think that the land that we offer, I think by our last count, it was about 16% of the town by landmass. And so, you know, finding a way to use this land to help bring us together would be helpful. And then another note is that the Select Board, there there's a substantial amount of property that's under the care and custody of the Select Board that we know that the public uses. And I think that, you know, I've been a little resistant to transferring some of this property to conservation, not because I'm opposed to it being used for that purpose, but because I am, I do believe that this board needs to look at our own properties, figure out future disposition, and come up with a plan to say, hey, we're holding this property for a future fire station. We're holding this property for a future school. And that until we do that, we really have to stop pushing too much land into conservation, because you can't really pull it back out. But I do think that that we are supporting the same mission in many ways, because there's a lot of land that, again, is underneath the care and custody of this board that is passively used by many members of the town. It's hundreds of acres. And and I certainly, as we, if I'm on the board while we get to the point of coming with use regulations, I will be coming to you guys for some help and guidance, because I think that the work that you and Mr. Pease before you have done to get us to this point and other members of the Commission has really been inspirational and and a clear guide on how we should manage our property better. You guys are doing it right. So I just want to thank you and acknowledge that.
Thank you. And I have to say, it's it's really a privilege to be a part of the Conservation Commission. We have a great team of commissioners right now. I respect them immensely. I've learned a great deal from them, and I think we have a really good collaboration. We don't always agree, and as you said earlier, the diversity in interpretation is a strength of the Commission. But to every individual, I know they respect one another and they treat each other with respect. And it it is an awesome privilege to be a part of that Commission. So thank you.
All right. Before you step away, Mr. Alonso is back, and I want to give him the opportunity, I know he had to step away for a moment there, I want to give him the opportunity to offer any comments or feedback.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm having somebody convalescing at home, so I had to attend to that. I did, I did catch most of it off-camera, but I want to thank the Conservation Commission for the good job they're doing, and it's a vast charge. I mean, of all the, one of the committees in town, of all of them, you guys probably have some of the longest meetings and real detail-oriented, roll-up-your-sleeve kind of meetings. So it's in protection of of the resources we have, and I appreciate all of those aspects of it and the dialogue that you have as a, as a Commission and the work you're all doing. So thank you, Ms. Wilson, for presenting that tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. So I don't see representation this evening from the Culture Council, so we will come back to them for our next meeting. So we also did receive three written reports. I normally would ask the clerk to read this, but I know over Wi-Fi, it's not always as clear. So I will try to stab going through these, and once my voice starts getting hoarse, and then I will try to look at some of my colleagues here to pick them up. So we're going to start with the APDC. We have three written reports that were submitted. APDC, which is the Architectural Preservation District Commission. It is from the ZBA, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and from the Agricultural Commission. So I'm going to start with the APDC on their written report. So APDC provided a memorandum, so to the Select Board, and this is numerical with some recommendations. So one, the APDC was involved in reviewing certificates to alter, which are called CTAs, for 993 Massachusetts Avenue and 912 Massachusetts Avenue. These two CTAs were for roofing work and were not subject to abiding review and approved as routine maintenance activities. APDC received a certificate to alter for 960 Massachusetts Avenue, which is the Ritter Memorial Building, and that was in late July 2023. Following discussions and additional information being received from town staff, the submittal was deemed complete at the August 8th APDC meeting and ready for abiding review and a public hearing. This was a submittal of the CTA that was disapproved by the APDC in 2022 and sustained by town vote at the November 2022 Special Town Meeting. The revised drawings reflected a different design for the handicap entry and different windows for both the main library section as well as the 1960s addition. The CTA was approved on September 12th, following a public hearing held on that same date. Number two, the APDC saw the arrival of a new member, Nathan Lockwood, and I'll comment, who was one of the authors of the Architectural Preservation District. But APDC saw the arrival of a new member, Nathan Lockwood, in February 2023, and the departure of Colin Dwyer, as his term ended on June 30th, 2023. Colin's position currently remains vacant. A new chair was elected effective for the July 11th meeting, while the clerk for the Commission remains the same. The decision was made to not elect a vice chair until the current vacancy is filled. So number three, and I will note that this is clearly written by Mr. Scollin-Breney, who writes dates in the military style. So I am pausing a little bit on the dates, because they're written, and, again, the military way. Number three, with the arrival of the town's new facility director, Chris Roof, and the building commissioner, Brian Gingeras, the APDC extended an invitation for both individuals to meet with members of the Commission. The meetings allowed both staff as well as commissioners to seek ways to improve the Architectural Preservation District Bylaw and the review process. From those discussions, changes to the certificate to alter form have been discussed, and a decision was made to prepare a brochure on the bylaw to be distributed to all owners of structures in the Architectural Preservation District. The current schedule calls for the brochure and mailing to be complete by the end of the first quarter of the calendar.
the first quarter of the calendar year. And number four, with the initiation of the town's master plan project, APDC members are monitoring the work of the consultant and attending the various town meetings to ensure the plan recognizes the importance of the Architecture Preservation District. This will be the town's first, um, this will be the first town master plan since the Architecture Preservation District was established, hence a critical component of the planning process. And then for recommendations, they note, uh, two, the first being that the annual reporting should mirror the fiscal year rather than the calendar year. Uh, changes in leadership and membership are based on the fiscal year, hence the report would align with those changes. And then number two, that annual training on the town's digital products uh, such as the website, social media, and Zoom uh should be offered by staff or consultants to all volunteers. An in-person Zoom meeting and recorded for those not in attendance due to schedule conflicts will provide volunteers with the appropriate guidance on those digital products and how they can be used to advance their work. For example, the recent change in the town's website should not have occurred until input from volunteers, in particular the chairs, uh, had been requested and received. And then on behalf of the fellow commissioners, we appreciate the opportunity to provide this report and support the preservation of the historic assets of the district that make the town of Lunenburg a special place to live. And that is from the Chair, Mr. Tony Scollin-Breney of the Architecture Preservation District. Um, he's not, again, here with us tonight for any questions. But we can identify if we have any, that way we can send them via email. Uh, so, uh, if any member has them, uh, please send them to Elaine and the town manager so they can be forwarded to the APDC. The other part that is not noted here that I will add is the Architecture Preservation District also uh is a, is a standing invitee and participant in the Municipal Building Design Committee as well, and that's also supported by the Chair, Mr. Tony Scollin-Breney. All right, for the Zoning Board of Appeals, also known as the ZBA, uh, this is a much shorter report. The Zoning Board of Appeals consists of five members and three associate members who are appointed by the Select Board in accordance with the provisions of Master and Law forty-eight and twelve as amended. We currently have a full board. To date in two thousand twenty-three, the board has heard and decided nineteen cases with one application currently pending. The Zoning Board of Appeals has the power to hear and decide appeals in accordance with Master and Law forty-eight and eight as amended from any person aggrieved by reason of his inability, by his of, excuse me, any person aggrieved by a reason of his or her inability to obtain a permit or enforcement action from the administrative officer or board in the town. The board hears, hears and decides petitions for variances and special permits, including permits for uses requiring authorizations of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Permits for parcels that lack law areas, setbacks, or yard areas less than what is required in the bylaw. Permits to change, alter, extend, and/or repair a non-conforming use or structure. Pondview Commons located on Howard Street, Lunenburg, is a forty-b comprehensive permit application currently before the board. The associate members participate in all hearings but do not have the ability to vote unless a sitting member is absent. This is a good way to get associate members familiar with the zoning regulations. And I'm going to look for Mr. Franco to read the Agricultural Commission's report.
I was kind of hoping you'd call on me for the ZBA, but you know.
So again, if any members have any questions related to the uh ZBA, also known as the Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, please be sure to forward those to Elaine and the town manager. And I just want to clarify, there was a note here about them hearing special permits. So, when we look at our zoning bylaws, there are several things for which the Planning Board has original jurisdiction, uh, meaning that, you know, in order to get that special permit, uh, you need to come before the Planning Board. But there are also some circumstances in which the Zoning Board of Appeals uh is the um, is the um originator for those requests. And so, uh, that was what was referenced about the nineteen cases uh that are before them and variances. All right, so to the agriculture, for the Agricultural Commission, uh, I'm sorry, the ZBA report was submitted by Al Gravell. Uh, Mr. Franco's going to read the Agricultural Commission's report from Mr. Matt Allison.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Agricultural Commission, work report throughout two thousand twenty-three. So this is broken out by months. January, we approved a set of goals for the year. One, hold ten meetings of the Agricultural Commission during the two thousand twenty-three calendar year. We have held eight meetings with one left this year. Two, review and approve all meeting minutes by the end of the following meeting. Achieved. Three, raise awareness for Lunenburg agriculture on available grants, eligibility, and how to apply. Four, sign up ten vendors, Lunenburg, sign up ten vendors, I guess, to Lunenburg Farmer's Market. There were fourteen vendors at one market this year with over twenty throughout the season. Five, support community members' pursuit of agriculture. Six, mediate, advocate, educate, and/or negotiate farming issues. We were able to resolve two farm complaints with no need for formal mediation. February, online survey determined Farmer's Market on Sundays, ten, ten AM to one PM, uh, we held a market every Sunday, uh, June through October, less four, that were rained out. We added a goal, we added a goal. Present to the Select Board and drive a town meeting article to align town farm acreage requirements with the state farm acreage requirements. Article thirteen, special town meeting twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three. Farmer's Market application is complete and ready for vendors. We were there every Sunday through June fourth, oh, sorry, we were there every Sunday, June fourth through October twenty-ninth, from nine thirty to one thirty, to open the building, provide support for vendors and patrons, and facilitate the LCFM, Lunenburg Farmer's Market. March, four members and one alternate interviewed and recommended two applicants for vacancies. Market management falls back on Agricultural Commission members. Uh, one hundred high-quality market bags were ordered, nine hundred dollars from previous vendor fees to be sold, nine hundred dollars from previous vendor fees, fees to be sold for ten dollars with a three dollar per bag donation to Lunenburg four H. LCFM applications were reviewed and approved at meetings. Advertisements were made in the Lunenburg ledger for the market. Skipping up to August, met with town council on the warrant article. Fifty-dollar stipend for music at the market was approved. All the above information is available in the minutes of our meetings. Recommendations to enhance or advance the operation of the body. Recognize, acknowledge, and support chapter one forty-three of the Code of Lunenburg townwide. Section four speaks to disclosure for prospective new residents. Section five speaks to a formal process for farm complaints. Accept, embrace, and encourage this vibrant group of volunteers and the charge given this commission by the state per MGL section forty, uh, I'm sorry, MGL chapter forty, section eight L. Agcoms may. One, buy, hold, manage, license, or lease land for agricultural purposes. Two, receive grants, gifts, bequests, or devisees of money or personal property of any nature and interests in real property. Three, advertise, prepare, print, and distribute books, maps, charts, and pamphlets related to local agriculture that the Municipal Agricultural Commission deems necessary for its work. Four, conduct research and prepare agricultural-related plans, including a comprehensive local agricultural land plan, which shall be, to the extent possible, consistent with any current town master plan and regional area plans. Uh, reference, parenthetical, reference to MGL one eighty-four, section thirty-three, Public Restriction Tract Index. Thank you. Uh, submitted by and signed by Matthew Allison, Agricultural Commission Chair.
All right, thank you. So I will be submitting a request from Mr. Allison to attend their next meeting. Uh, I did receive a request from a resident, um, noting that the uh current um alignment reduced the um acreage required for a farm from five acres down to two uh to align with state law. Uh, there is a public request to decrease that further to one point five acres. Um, and so I will seek to meet with them to um, you know, present that request on behalf uh of a resident uh in town and see if there's, you know, what can be done, if anything, on that. And then also, um, to, to ask for them to take a look at uh the properties that are under the care and custody of the Select Board to see if they have uh any interest in um managing, licensing uh the land for agricultural purposes, as we are aware, a couple of our parcels are being used for that purpose already. Um, and just to see kind of what their interest is in that, and then uh I'll report back to this board uh on how that conversation goes. All right, are there any comments generally uh related to APDC, ZBA, or Agricultural Commission that in almost to make before we move on the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to thank them all for their, for their work in submitting their reports and all of the, you know, volunteerism in each of their spheres of influence. I want to acknowledge all of those people who do that every week, every year, throughout the year.
Thank you, Mr. Alonso. All right, and I, I also want to extend a, a warm thank you to the members of the different committees. I know that uh, I was kind of insistent on the, on us getting their reports and presentations today. Uh, there were a couple of questions on, on that, but um, I do want to thank everyone for taking the time to pull together these reports. It's really helpful for this board to be aware of the work that is being done, to know how we can better promote support, uh, to support it. And then to also hear, uh, for the town manager as well, to hear what some of the financial requests are that relate to operational requests. Um, to see, you know, what opportunities there are prior to the budget being proposed uh to meet any of these uh needs. All right, uh, going through the agenda, we don't have any appointments this night, um, but we, as far as, uh, we don't have any appointments this evening. Uh, interviews, reappointments, and resignations, I'm sorry, it looks like we have some ratifications though. So we have two ratifications for the town manager. Um, both, uh, excuse me, one is for the public access videographer and the second is for the interim town accountant. I'll ask the town manager to present both ratifications, um, and then we can take them one at a time or together. Um, do you want to take them one at a time or together?
I'd like one at a time.
All right, we'll take them one at a time. But if you want to, if you want to present them together, that'd be helpful. I don't expect we're to have any challenges. Thank you.
Um, so the first, uh, I'll start with the interim town accountant, Julie Costello. Julie's been working as our consultant in the accounting department uh since this summer and uh she's been very helpful and also um, uh, employee of hers. Uh, Steve Barrett has also been filling in for the assistant town accountant position as a consultant as well. Uh, so the reason for appointing Julie as the interim town accountant is Karen is nearing the completion of the cap of her hours for this calendar year, uh, so that would reset on January first. But she needs to focus on certain duties to, for the Schedule A and the pro forma recap. Um, so to focus on those and if, in the event we need a warrant signed by a town accountant, we have um Julie officially legally um appointed by the, the board to do so. So, it's in the event of that happening. The second appointment is Chris Piscopo and Chris uh for the public access videographer. This is the, the last videographer vacancy, so I'm very happy uh to um put him forth as the candidate for ratification. Chris attended the Mount Wachusett Community College Wednesday Workforce Job Fair that the assistant town manager, HR director, attended and she encouraged Chris to apply for the position. Chris has an associate's degree in media arts and technology and is working on a second associate's degree in environmental sciences. He has two years' experience working as a self-employed wedding photographer and videographer. Chris made a positive first impression to both the assistant town accountant, I'm sorry, assistant town manager, HR director, and the PAC manager. His references indicated he is a great employee with a positive attitude, very reliable, great at problem solving and time management. And upon ratification, um, as I said, this will, there will be no more videographer vacancies.
Excellent. All right, do we have any questions, comments to the town manager? If not, is there a motion? Uh, we'll take them one at a time.
Um, I move to ratify the town manager's appointment of Julie Costello to the position of interim town accountant.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All right, it's going to be a, a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Alonso.
Aye.
Mr. NuZolo.
Aye.
Ms., Ms. Emke.
Aye.
Mr. Franco.
Aye.
And an aye for myself. All right, congratulations to Julie. Excellent. And then, uh, um, I move to ratify the town manager's appointment of the uh public access videographer, Christian Piscopo.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All right, it's also going to be a roll call vote. Mr. Alonso.
Aye.
Mr. NuZolo.
Aye.
Ms. Emke.
Aye.
Mr. Franco.
Aye.
And an aye for myself. And congratulations to Christian. Uh, I think there's really some excellent people in the PAC. I think that they have really consistently been able to attract some really outstanding people, uh, including the uh, the young man who's uh monitoring us this evening. Uh, so, you know, I'm always impressed by the uh, the staff that, that Joe has underneath there. So, certainly would think that Christian's going to be in good company with a good team. All right. Okay, and so we're going to turn now to the town manager report. Um, and then following the town manager's report, we're going to pause for any questions or comments, and then the town manager will briefly, uh, we do have some Capitol Project updates in our Google Drive. Um, I think that we've all probably had the opportunity prior to now to read them, so we'll just take the opportunity, if there's any questions that anyone has on any of the statuses, uh, the town manager can give a brief summary of them, but I don't expect that we're to spend too much time on that. Uh, so I'll turn to the town manager for those two items.
Okay. I'll start with employee highlights. So I want to call out the DPW for their response to this last first storm event of the season. And so that was Tuesday night into Wednesday morning. They had their crews and contractors that treated the roads due to the temperatures that were just falling below freezing and they plowed three inches of accumulation. The snow changed to rain in the early morning hours and the school had contacted the DPW around five AM for assistance to treat and plow the school parking lots and roadways. On Thanksgiving morning, the sewer business manager saw a social media post about two open manholes that must have been uncovered during the snow event and Highway Superintendent Joe Progen went out on Thanksgiving and um replaced those covers. And yesterday, the DPW went out and welded those covers uh to the, to the frames and they will be replacing those after the winter. So a big thank you to the DPW and Highway Superintendent Joe Progen for keeping all of us safe, especially during the busy holiday travel week.
You're here. I think that's one of the highlights of the town is the work the DPW does.
Yes. So I'll uh go into vacancies for board committing commissions. There is one vacancy on Architectural Preservation District Commission, one vacancy until the next annual town election for the Cemetery Commission, one vacancy on the Conservation Commission, one vacancy on the Finance Committee, one regular member and one associate vacancy on Green Communities Committee, one member-at-large vacancy on the Open Space Committee, and one vacancy on the Personnel Committee. Anyone that is interested in any of these positions can find the volunteer application form on the town website, complete it and submit it to the Select Board's office. And if you have any questions on the roles and responsibilities, you can call the Select Board's office at nine seven eight five eight two four one three zero, extension one four four. For employment opportunities with the town, we have the following positions open. Assistant Town Accountant, which is thirty-two hours a week. Assistant Meal Site Manager, which is nineteen and a half hours a week. Digital Service and Outreach Librarian. It's a, a combined position that was two positions um and was part of the new collective bargaining agreement to combine those positions. And that is thirty-four hours a week. Facility Superintendent, forty hours a week. Finance Director, forty hours a week. Have the, one heavy equipment operator position, forty hours a week. Land Use Director, forty hours a week. Principal Assessor, forty hours a week. And Staff Librarian for the Young Adult Section. And that was a resignation. Staff Librarian for the Young Adult Section. And that was a resignation that we received recently, and that is 30 hours a week. Information on these positions can be found on the town website as well, under Job Opportunities. Update on requests for proposals, invitation for bids. The Lunenburg Adult Activity Center Generator Project is currently out to bid, and bids are due December 13th. And the Public Safety Carpet Project is currently out to bid, and bids are due on December 20th. So an update on grant paperwork that I'm assisting different board and commissions on. I'm working with the Park Commission on completing all the documents for the $500,000 park grant this week, and reviewing, and then we'll complete all the necessary documents for the Mass Trails Grant that Mary referenced tonight, and that's for the Reno Table Rock Cowdery Parking Planning Project, a mouthful. And that is for $61,305. The cost sharing portion for the town's portion is $15,450, and that is to be paid out of the timber rights account. An update on third quarter preliminary billing and pro forma tax recap. A draft tax bill insert was sent to the Board of Assessors and Select Board on November 17th for the third quarter preliminary bills. I worked off a version that was used by the town of West Tisbury and revised it to include particulars to our bills and additional information. I communicated with different people at Department of Revenue and circulated among staff in the accounting, treasurer collector, assessors, and sewer departments. After sending, I did suggest adding a sentence that those on a budget can pay in advance of the fourth quarter actual bill, and this will be applied to their actual bill. The thought is that it would give an option for anyone that's on a fixed budget to pay that in advance of, of receiving that fourth quarter actual bill that we are saying is likely to be higher than all the other preliminary. So they can expect that it will be higher. The assessors discussed this at their meeting last week and suggested adding additional information regarding estimated dates of when fourth quarter actual bills would be received. So I talked to the chair today, agreed that's a good idea, but we would, we can't pinpoint a date. It will all be dependent on when the values are certified by the Department of Revenue, so it would be a no later than date that we have to get tax bills out for the fourth quarter. So they are meeting next week and will be finalizing that, because the treasurer collector is working on her portion with the interim principal assessor on doing testing for, in the training module for Munas of the third quarter preliminary bills, and getting ready to do that in the live module of Munas. So, and also, the interim finance director, Karen Broshu, has almost completed the pro forma recap that will need to be done and be sent to the DOR as well.
Great. Thank you to the town manager, as always, for such a great report. I want to turn to the members of the board with any questions or comments the board may have for the town manager. Mr. Alonso.
I have nothing.
Okay. Mr. Nuzzolo?
I don't have any questions, but thank you for the update, Heather.
You're welcome.
All right, and do we have any questions or comments here?
No questions, just thank you.
All right, I, I have one. Any, are we getting any closer to hiring? I know that all these roles are critical, but if I focus on the assessor, land use director, and finance director, just so that we have an update, are we any closer to hiring for those three roles?
The principal assessor, we're in discussions with a candidate. The finance director, unfortunately, not any closer to hiring someone, was re-advertised at a higher salary, so hopefully we'll receive a positive response from that. And the last...
Land use.
Land use. No, we have not received, we've received two applicants, I think, two or three, and, no, we're not any closer to hiring that. So, but we do have Richard Harris that's been filling in as the interim for the time being.
All right. Well, thank you as always, and then I know you're gonna breeze straight into old business. Any just highlights on the capital plan update? I know members have had the opportunity to read them, and you've highlighted the changes for us.
The highlights are, in yellow, are the, the projects that have balances that would be available for either within that fiscal year, if there were overages in other projects that aren't complete, or that are, can be closed out and re-appropriate at a future town meeting. I'll just point out some changes since we last discussed this. The carport project, the board is aware that those full amount, we're not going back out to bid for that project. That's gonna be re-appropriate at a future town meeting, that full cost, and that's $135,000. The kitchen remodel at the senior center, one change in that is Monty Tech originally was gonna be able to do the entire project, but they are not able to because they don't have the, the staff within their cabinetry. So they could be able to remove the old cabinets, but they would need to be installed and everything by an outside contractor. The, on fiscal '22, the vehicle, the police vehicles, those are fully closed out, those are on the road, those amounts available. So you'll see a lot more projects falling off on the, the completed list. Fiscal '23, same thing, all the, the canine replacement, that project is fully, project, the dog has been secured and fully trained, and Cody is now officially deployed. So we hope that he'll be coming to a future meeting, so everyone can greet him. I've been able, fortunate, been able to meet him as the very good Richard.
Is Jerry formally retired?
Yes, Jerry has formally retired. We thank Jerry for all his years of service. And Sergeant Taj. And other projects in that year, the, obviously, the old primary school that, $300,000 from that line in fiscal '23 was transferred to an independent capital article for the TCP roof repair, and the AC for the classrooms for the primary school, that full amount was transferred to an independent capital article amount, a standalone article. So those amounts have changed. In fiscal '24, the projects, the school administration expects to have the, the projects on, in fiscal '24, complete by the end of the fiscal year. I think their original, last time I reported, was to have the bid out in the fall, but there was a change in personnel there, and so their plan is still to have those done by the end of the fiscal year. And the, I think that's about it. The new half-ton crew cab pickup, that DPW director ordered that truck through the state contract in September, and the Northfield Culver project, a vendor, the Beta Group will be doing the survey and permitting for that project.
All right. Thank you for the, to the town manager for the report. I know we've been getting them about every other month. Are there any questions, comments from the board to the town manager?
I have...
Thank you for the update.
Welcome.
One question. This may be a silly question. I'm looking at fiscal year '23.
Mm-hmm.
The master plan.
Yes, $90?
Yes. So $110,000 was appropriated, contract was awarded, $453,000, and there's $90 left?
Because, um...
Is there...
There was a previous appropriation of $40,000.
Okay, okay, so, okay, yes.
Actually, it was 50, I think, originally, 50, yeah. So...
All right. Any additional questions to the town manager? Comments? All right, thank you, Heather, for you and your team continuing to move these projects forward. You know, definitely can see the impact that Mr. Ruth directly is having on the town, especially as it relates to these capital projects, and I know that Julie's a critical part of a lot of this as well. So just wanna give that credit and acknowledge the work that's being done to help make these advances.
Thank you. I agree. There's a lot of back and forth on putting bid packages together to get them to where they're ready to go out to bid. And that happens between the department head and Julie.
All right. So for current business this evening, typically following a special town meeting or any town meeting, we do a recap, any follow-up action items. Some sort of, I know that several comments were made during the public comment period. I don't think we need to rehash them, but if there are any, if we wanted, this is open dialogue amongst the board, so just go ahead and speak up. And I, I know that was gonna have to be a little organized since we have some members on Zoom, but any comments anyone wants to offer related to special town meeting, follow-up action items. Mr. Alonso.
I would just like to comment that I hope that the water district protection map, I may have that worded improperly, but I, I do hope we can get to something that the town can vote on. I mean, it's been discussed at length at the annual town meeting, it was discussed at length on this town meeting, and whatever obstacles we can, whether it's the map clarity, or the zoning definitions, and the like, I hope we can get by this, and because I think it's important that we get this map and district updated. So I do hope that the planning board and those who spoke for or against it in town meeting and at some of the public hearings that were held prior to town meeting, I hope we can get this in order and put it forward to get, to be passable in the spring.
Just speaking, I can comment on that. Just speaking with the planning board administrative assistant today, they had a meeting last night, they do have goals for the year, that being one of them, and addressing the map, and I know Richard Harris is also helping with that and working on, because that was a model DEP by law, so making sure that is clear for the next.
I would, I would just, on piggyback on that, I wanted to commend the planning board chair, who did an excellent job presenting that article and the other articles, and was very clear in his explanation. So I wanna, I wanna thank the planning board chair for his presentation and discussion of those articles.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Nuzzolo, I know you weren't there, I know you've had the opportunity to watch the meeting afterwards. You know, feel free to jump in with any comments you may have.
Yeah, so a lot has been said already, but I did watch some of special town meeting. I don't know if I got to the halfway mark, but I watched as much of it as I could, we'll put it that way. I was really disappointed to see that Article 4 not only didn't pass, but had as much opposition as it had. I believed that freeing up some more ARPA funds would have been in the best interest of all of us in town, but a lot of folks disagreed with that. And you know what? That's okay. You can't get everything you want in a democracy. There's always going to be people who disagree with you, and that's a feature of our system, not a bug. And yes, sometimes it can get chaotic and messy, and we do all have a personal responsibility to moderate how chaotic it becomes. It needs to remain respectful and civil, but you know, it's a sign that we have a healthy and robust democracy, when I reflected on it. You know, it really is. And I just believe that's something that you can't take for granted. So with all that being said, I'm able to and more than willing to move on and look forward, so.
All right. And on this board, any comments, thoughts, recap?
I don't, I personally don't. We were on the same board, too.
Yeah, I know. I mean, in the room. I keep saying in the room.
Yeah. No, I know, you've already corrected yourself once. I just figured I'd give you a ribbing for it. I have nothing.
All right. I want to comment on a couple of things. You know, I, I think, I just want to highlight some things that I think are going really well. I think that the, the new clicker system that we have for voting seems to be going extremely well. I think that the way that the town clerk is able to tabulate quickly with support, the way the screens go, PAC mentioned how on the display back to those who watch the meetings, how they're able to transfer the different feeds. And, and I think that on the, you know, I just want to highlight, I think the town clerk and her team do a great job. I think PAC certainly does a, does a great job. And I think this board and the finance committee, both of us had meetings. Our meeting was, I think, 6:20, theirs was at 6:30. But both of us took the time to, to meet prior to the meetings to make recommendations that we hadn't previously made to help streamline the meeting itself, because we know it takes about five minutes to do it. So I think we were able to, even when the meeting ran long, to shave off some time by being able to do that in advance. And then I also want to commend the town manager. Every, every, before every town meeting, we have a, kind of a pre-meeting. It's usually a week in advance, and it's with, you know, the town manager and town moderator, and usually the chairs of this board and the finance committee with the town clerk and the finance, I didn't say finance director already, finance director. And, and it's a good, and town council, and it's a good conversation to kind of do, not a dry run, but to walk through any questions that anyone may have related to the format of how we're gonna go through the meeting. And it really just is an opportunity to get us to, to be able to do it and get, you know, with the moderator in an efficient manner. So I think that those pre-meetings are extremely helpful, just to kind of get us in a good flow. So I want to certainly acknowledge all those efforts.
I would, Mr. Chair, encourage Mr. Nuzzolo to see the rest of the meeting, as we were building up the drama for the best part. I think he's missed the best part of the meeting.
I'll go back and watch the rest of it.
All right. Let's see, minutes, warrants, and action items. So, and we don't have any minutes to approve. We do have, let's see, we need some signatures here. Oh, okay. So this is, I'm signing a letter of thanks to Mr. Tremblay for his volunteerism on the Conservation Commission. He's identified that he is, has resigned due to moving out of town, so we will see, send him a letter of thanks, acknowledging that. So it's signed, I'm just passing it down to the board. We have an accounts payroll warrant in the amount of $342,056.89. And we will get three...
Just one on me, then?
We will get three signatures, so we, we should be all set. Mr. Alonso.
Thank you.
And then we have a payroll warrant in the amount of $987,327.38. Any action items this evening? All right. Committee reports. Any committee reports tonight?
I have two. So one, first I'll do my committee committee report, which is that capital planning will meet tomorrow. We have our final presentation, which is facilities and parks. And after that, we will be finalizing the rest of our meetings, which will be taking all of the items that were presented to us in the past five meetings, and going through a discussion, a prioritization, a final tally, and coming up with a recommendation to present to the town manager. So that is tomorrow on Zoom at Ritter Library, lower meeting room at 6:00 PM. Finance Committee, I think, meets this Thursday. And the other thing I should have mentioned in announcements, when I mentioned that, you know, the DPW is having two public hearings on Zoom tomorrow at 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM, that I want to acknowledge that the Attorney General herself was in Lunenburg a week ago Monday. I want to acknowledge that the attorney general herself was in Lunenburg a week ago Monday, the Monday before Thanksgiving, to meet with people in the Unitil ratepayers region, which of course is the four, the three towns and one city, Fitchburg, Ashby, Lunenburg, and Townsend, to hear from, directly from residents and other public officials, but mainly from residents about their feeling about how this Unitil service is going, about their feeling about the rate hike. I want to thank the attorney general who came, not only herself, but with at least 10 or maybe a dozen of her staff available to talk to people, and to go back and prepare a report with a recommendation from her office to the DPU. She's the one, aside from elected officials, who encouraged people to go to the public hearings tomorrow, so it really was a good showing. It reminded me that in 2009, so what is that, 14 years ago, almost a month, that Governor Patrick at the time came to Lunenburg to sign legislation that was developed after the ice storm, and here we are 14 years later, and we're still fighting similar battles and having top-level state officials come and hear from our citizens, and that has always encouraged, our whole entire state delegation was here, Representative Scarsdale and Krishmerick and Senator Cronin, so it was a good showing by everyone, and I think everybody's town was represented, and it was a good meeting. I hope something positive comes from it, and that the ratepayers can make their voices loud and clear to the DPU, which hopefully can act on the behalf of those residents and those taxpayers, and those ratepayers, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you. Any other committee reports?
School committee met November 15th. They have found a replacement for Mr. Cassidy. Ellen Widmore, I hope I'm saying her last name correctly, has accepted imposition, but she is currently, her title will be Director of Administration and Finance. She's currently under contract until February, so start date is to be determined, depends on if she needs to stay on her. So remains to be seen when her official start date will be, but it may not be until February.
Okay. Any additional committee reports?
Yes. You know, I, on the calendar, it would have made sense that I had done one for the Council on Aging, and then I realized why I didn't remember doing it, is that's because we had town meetings. So Council on Aging met on November 14th. I would say that Debbie Lincoln covered anything of material that I was going to say there, you know, mostly about the Century Club, et cetera. 300th Anniversary Committee met last evening, Pete Lincoln covered that for me, and Economic Development Committee will meet this Thursday, 6:00 PM, November 30th, that's pending a quorum. There's also a tree lighting going on, so I don't know if the quorum's going to happen, but if it does, that meeting is on for 6:00 PM at the Ritter. That's it.
Great. Excellent.
Sorry to just jump right in, but I did have a committee report, it was just too slow, unmuting. So the planning board did meet last night, it's a brief report. They had another public hearing for 255 Sunny Hill Road, that's a development that I spoke about last month in a committee report. They are going back and forth to get conservation approval, both with the state and the details of that I'm not too sure about, and also with the town. So they had a public hearing also at the Conservation Commission. I was not able to watch that, but based on the meeting last night, I'm under the impression that there were certain conditions, that the Conservation Commission wanted them to meet before they began construction on at least one of the lots, so that's just ongoing.
All right. Thank you for that, I'm just looking, thank you for that. Committee report, I wanted to, I have, I attended the library meeting two weeks ago, I don't have my notes with me, though, so I will need to give that committee report our next meeting. I did want to highlight, and I think that, have we discussed this probably yet?
No.
All right. Upcoming meeting event schedule, so we have, again, as a reminder, we have a tree lighting that's Thursday, again, at 6:00 PM, it's at the Town Gazebro, and our upcoming meeting schedule, the select board will be meeting on December the 5th, December the 12th, and December the 19th. And we're to turn to public comments, any public comments this evening from the town manager?
None.
All right. Any public comments from the public? Mr. McDonald?
Good evening, guys. I just got a couple of things. One is, as this time comes around and we see what's going on around us around the world, I just want to tell you a quick story. My family is military family. I've had two brothers, I got nephew in the Air Force, I got nephew in the Marines, I have a nephew in the Army. We are a very proud Gold Star family, and I just want to thank Caesar for what you're doing. In a way, my nephew right now is overseas in the Air Force, and my prayers go out to you, and my heart goes out to you, and thank you very much, and Lunenburg is back with you, we're proud of you. So I just wanted to say that. The other thing is, I just want to talk to Renee, for example. Renee, thank you for your acknowledgement of the lakes, you caught us between testing the town center, but I just want to say we had tons of volunteers there on Sunday decorating that town center, and the Lions Club also had tons of volunteers decorating the gazebo. So volunteerism is out there in Lunenburg, and we're very proud of them. The other thing is, as you know, we work for the Salvation Army, and I think, Heather, you're going to be doing a angel tree at the town hall, is that correct?
Yes, it's up.
Okay, is it going to be on Facebook, so people can know, we can send it around?
It will, when our person that does that is back in the office.
All right. So anyways, the tree lighting ceremony, we're looking forward to it, it's Thursday night at 6 o'clock, I hope you can all can make it, it's going to be spectacular this year. So, guys, thank you, and Caesar, God bless, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the kind work, it's Mr. McDonald.
You're the best, buddy, take care.
Any other public comments this evening? All right, any...
Oh, public, sorry.
Any board comments?
I just want to echo one thing that was the town manager announced earlier about the, the survey for the master plan. I just want people to know, I did it today, it's 10 multiple choice questions, and like one, you pick three of your top choices, so literally takes less than five minutes to do. And I know a number of boards and committees are encouraging people to, to complete it, and so I just want to get it out there and encourage people go to planlunenburg.org to find the survey, or it's actually linked from the town website as well.
Mr. Chair, I want to make one public comment, and it's about the town meeting. I think Mr. Lincoln hinted at it a little bit, and, and I want to thank all the people who stayed, even though it lasted like four hours or a little bit over, and, you know, in the past, on a special town meeting, we were always running the risk of not having a quorum, and we didn't this time, we actually had people stay, I mean, there were people who left, I'm sure they had their own schedules and it was late, but I really want to thank the people, because, you know, I would hate to lose open town meeting government. I think it is the best form of government, it's the most direct, and I want to encourage people who haven't gone to go, and the people who were there and stayed, and there were some new people who spoke at the end, I want to thank them, because all of this works, not only because of the people on the boards and the appointed committees, which also volunteer, but people coming out for those two nights a year, you know, the annual town meeting and the special town meeting, it all works because of them and their participation. So I want to acknowledge their participation and staying until the end, and even though it was a small number, it was like 70 or so I counted at the end, it still is a benefit that people kept that, and we didn't lose the quorum.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Alonso. All right, and, yeah, we're doing good tonight. So I want to thank everyone for, for the reports, I can't thank enough the committees tonight for the reports, and thank all the members here for all the work that we do as we get toward the end of the year. This is the time to be thankful, this is the time to, to be thankful for the people in our lives, for the people we've lost, and as we approach the holiday season, you know, December's a month where many religions celebrate different things, and it's also the celebration of a new year, that, you know, for this, this time of the year can be hard for many people, and so I encourage you to think of your neighbor who maybe has lost someone this year, a friend who has gone through some loss this year, and the best gift we can always give everyone is our time, and if we can find some time for the people near us during this time of the year, that would be the best gift we can give. And I move to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
Any additional discussion? This would be a roll call vote, Mr. Alonso.
Aye.
Mr. Nuzzolo?
Aye.
Ms. Emke?
Aye.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
And an aye for myself, that's 9:22, and we are adjourned. For those at home, we will see you next week, same time. We have three meetings in a row in December, and we look forward to seeing you then. Have a wonderful evening.
Recording stopped.